Welcome to the January 8th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council and wish all of our residents a Happy New Year. Councilman Bill Shacklet is responsible for our prayer tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I've invited, you know, what we've said about Murfreesboro is that it's made up of a bunch of special people and I've invited a very special person to be and do our opening prayer tonight. This is Candy Carter with Last Call for Grace. You know, there's, she feeds folks in our community and a lot of people sit on the sidelines and especially on a cold night like tonight and I, and there are people out there that are hungry and may not have a warm home to go to. And all of it, a lot of us look at that situation and say, somebody ought to do something. Well Candy looked at that situation and began to coordinate and organize a ministry in our community that's really doing a special work in our community and I've asked her to do our opening prayer for us, Mayor. Candy?
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and we give you all the glory, all the honor and all the praise that only you are so worthy of. I thank you, Father, for this council. Lord, you have appointed them in the positions that they are in and I ask that you continue to give them wisdom and direction. I pray for our city, Lord, and I ask that you never withdraw your hand, that you always keep a watchful eye and your protection over us. I thank you, Lord, for the privilege to be a citizen in a city who I believe loves you very much and I thank you for the people here. So, Lord, we thank you, we praise you, we ask for you to be in the midst of this meeting tonight in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
We also have guests with us tonight. We have Mr. Andrew Clark, who's with treat 456. He's working on his communications merit badge and his father is Mr. James Clark and he is, Andrew's gonna be responsible for our pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council members, we have a special proclamation tonight. Our community in the last several weeks lost a great leader and so I'd like to ask the Beach family if y'all would join me at the podium tonight. The Beach family has a history of being leaders and servants in this community. Clay even served on our water and sewer board and how long have you served on the water and sewer board, Clay?
I don't know, I lose count, 12, 15 years, something like that.
I think Darren will tell you, he's one of our, our best members that we have and so it's our pleasure that the city council, we present a proclamation, I'll read this to you. Whereas Mr. Ted G. Beach was devoted to his community as a former member of the Murfreesboro City Council and such devotion was shown as well to his friends and family, including his wife, Thelma Beach, daughter Susan Yoast and Vicki Scott, son Clay Beach, sister Claudia Frazier, and brothers Tom and Larry Beach. And whereas he founded Beach Insurance Agency that evolved into Beach and Gentry Insurance before merging with Miller and Lowry Insurance to create Miller Lowry Beach Insurance Services. And whereas he was a veteran of the United States Navy, serving in the Korean War. As a Murfreesboro City Council member, he served on the Parks and Recreation Commission and Planning Commission. He was known as a hardworking man, a nurturer and supporter of his church, teachers, firefighters, police officers in parks. He was a member of the Sportsman's Club, the Blue Raider Club, the City Cafe Coffee Club, and the Lions Club, where he helped many who were in need. Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of our entire city council, do hereby proclaim January 8th, 2015, as a day to honor Ted G. Beach and urge all citizens to honor his memory as a remarkable man who cared deeply for others in this community. Congratulations. Thank you. Clay, do you want to introduce?
That's my son Adam and my sister Vicki Scott.
Thank you.
And we appreciate y'all.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now move into the consent agenda. You have several items before you.
Hearing no comments on the consent agenda, I move for approval and acceptance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You have the minutes of the November 13th, 2014 regular meeting, the December 4th, 2014 special meeting, the December 4th, 2014 regular meeting, and the December 11th, 2014 regular meeting in front of you.
If no comments or corrections, I move that we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Moving to third readings. Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 14049, amending Appendix C, Employees' Revised Pension Plan of the Murfreesboro City Code to comply with requirements regarding the treatment of same-gender marriage by qualified retirement plans.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You have the minutes of the November 13th, 2014 regular meeting, the December 4th, 2014 special meeting, the December 4th, 2014 regular meeting, and the December 11th, 2014 regular meeting in front of you.
If no comments or corrections, I move that we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Moving to third readings. Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 14049, amending Appendix C, Employees' Revised Pension Plan of the Murfreesboro City Code to comply with requirements regarding the treatment of same-gender marriage by qualified retirement plans.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Move to second readings and consider for passage on second reading ordinance 140Z56 to rezone an area located south of Indian Park Drive along Merchant Walk for residential multifamily 16, RM 16 District.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second. We have a motion and second.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
No. We'll consider for passage on second reading ordinance 140Z57, to rezone an area on 728 West Thompson Lane to plan residential development, PRD District.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second. We have a motion and second.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 140Z58, to rezone an area located at 315 West Main Street to Central Business CBD District.
Move for passage on second reading. Second.
A motion and a second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 140A59 to annex an area located along Rack Court and adopt for same of plan of services.
Move for passage. Second.
We have a motion and second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll consider for passage on second reading ordinance 140Z60, to zone an area located along Rack Court as Highway Commercial CH District and Gateway Design Overlay 1, GDO 1 District simultaneous with annexation.
Move for passage.
Second.
Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 14061, amending the Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A zoning Section 2, Section 21, Section 26, and Chart 4, dealing with parking requirements for commercial centers.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 14062, amending the Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A zoning Sections 11, 14, and 15, and Charts 1 and 2 pertaining to uses permitted, lot and yard requirements, and land intensity ratios.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move into new business and consider renewal of a certificate of compliance for Guatemay Patel at 96 Liquor and Wine 2019A, Last Castas Pike.
This is a requirement from the state of Tennessee every two years. This is an existing business, business searching for his certificate of compliance to be renewed. He has met our background requirements and I recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and I think we have Ms. Skels Harris and Mr. LaLance.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider recommendations of the airport manager with regards to land lease agreement with Air Methods. Mr. Gerke?
Mayor and members of the city council, tonight the members of the Airport Commission recommend approval of the land lease agreement with Air Methods, allowing them to build facilities and conduct emergency medical transport services based at the Murfreesboro Municipal Airport. The agreement allows Vanderbilt Life Flight Station to be based in Murfreesboro. Besides providing a time-saving link for our citizens to trauma centers in Nashville, this agreement with Air Methods will base several highly-trained pilots and flight nurses and paramedics at the Murfreesboro Municipal Airport. It will hopefully also lead to other relationships in our community, such as partnerships with students enrolled in our various maintenance and dispatch programs at the Aerospace Department and Miltonist State University. This lease is a three-year lease with two one-year options. The rent is $26,750 per year on a half acre that is located in once, was once the soccer, McKnight Soccer Fields. The Air Methods will be providing their own 50-by-50 ramp, a hangar, and a modular office building. And the city will also be providing access to the airfield, utilities, water, sewer, electricity, and a driveway for their employees to get to their facility. We'll also be putting in fencing to secure that area. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time. And I'd also like to point out, Mayor, that joining me tonight is Mr. Orland Seeland, Kathy Nippers, and Mark Tankersley, all with Air Methods.
Thank you, Mr. Gerke. Glad to have you here.
Mayor, I think this is gonna be an improvement for, the opportunities for our citizens to have faster medical service. So I think this is a positive move. You want a motion?
Sure.
Move for approval.
Second.
We're all in favor of safety and put medical response.
Just make the whole council step in the motion.
Vice Mayor Young, Councilman Washington with our motion and our second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We look forward to having you to be a part of Murfreesboro. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Mayor.
And if you don't live here now, you probably will.
Okay, continuing with our update of our departments, I believe this is our third update. We have the Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Director regarding Parks and Recreation projects and activities.
Mayor and members of the council, good evening. It's indeed a pleasure to be here and I want to thank the council for the opportunity to come and talk about our programs and our projects and of course, without the gracious support of the council and this council and past councils, all the things that I'm gonna talk about tonight wouldn't be possible. So thank you in advance for all your support, for our staff, and for all the citizens of Murfreesboro. Of course, one of the things that we set as a goal is we want to provide quality programs and facilities that provide safe and enjoyable environments for our citizens, which enhance their quality of life. And to do that, what we generally do is we base that on utilizing best practice principles that are set forth by the National Recreation and Parks Association. And what they do is they have three pillars that they set for guiding Parks and Recreation for best practices across the country in development of their programs. And those three pillars are conservation, health and wellness, and social equity. And I want to give you just some examples of how we're utilizing best practices in developing our programs for Parks and Recreation and how that translates to what we're doing and how important it is to our citizens and the role of our Parks and Recreation Department in providing those services. When you look at, when you look at the Parks and Recreation Department, we have 100, excuse me, 1,115 acres of parkland. Well, 575 of that is set aside for passive recreation and some people never think of that because there's only 540 for active, where you see the ball fields and those kind of things. But if you've ever been to Murphy Springs, walked on the boardwalks there, you're in a part of 100 acres of wetlands that we preserve throughout the city at Oakland Black Fox and Nickajack Trace. And it's very important that we preserve those. By definition, a wetland is a filter. And so it actually helps clean the water that is returned to our streams and rivers and it's really an important function. But we use those areas for education. And you see a lot of children going to Discovery Center, you see them at Oakland, you see them at different areas. And we've enhanced those areas and made those where you can have education. We have 125 acres along our greenway. And if you think about all the things that happen on the greenway, there's a lot of studies that show that people that get outdoors and exercise have a really increased potential there for better benefits for health, lower stress, et cetera. And so those are important as well. And then we have 350 acres of woodlands at Barfield Crescent Park and we've got about five miles of natural trails there. And a lot of people never think about what we're doing because you sit around and you listen to some of the folks that grew up in Murfreesboro and they'll say, well, some of the places where we, we played is now a parking lot and there, there's a, there's a mall there. And you start thinking about what you're doing in the preservation of your community and actually setting these places aside and developing these parks that have balance in them. It's very, very important. One of the programs that we have developed that goes along with conservation is our outdoor Murfreesboro. Outdoor Murfreesboro, we utilize these three areas that I've talked about to create educational settings for not only children but for adults and families. We have a lot of programs. We have guided hikes both day and night, backpacking, camping. We do kayaking along the river. We do trail runs. We do a lot of things, youth camps. But it's really important that one of the things that we think about is educating people on the preservation of our natural resources. Because it's important that we start them early, thinking about that, so they can be better stewards of the land and we can pass that from generation to generation. And so as we go into, and I'm so happy that we're going into the 2035 plan and that we're looking ahead 25 years, that we need to think about, what are we doing that's going to preserve these natural areas for our future generations? And you can see on the screen, some of the areas and some of the participation that happens at these particular areas. So it's gonna be really critical that we maintain that balance in our Parks and Recreation offerings and into our natural areas and thinking about conservation for our community. The next pillar, some of the examples for health and wellness, and I throw up this slide here just because, you see, if you look across the picture, a lot of people, and they're all different ages. I'm sure from all different backgrounds and you can see the gentleman that has the baby on his chest. And one of the things that's woven all the way through our Parks and Recreation Department underlying is the health element. We're trying to get people out, we're trying to get them active. And my question is always, because one of the hardest groups to recreate for us is teens. And I always ask the question, how do you get a teen to climb 30 feet of stairs 20 or 30 times in an afternoon? And people go, gosh, I don't know how you do that. And I said, put a water slide on the other side of it. And they'll do it every day because they enjoy it. They don't realize the benefits, the health benefits that they're getting. And when, you know, I know when my children used to come home from the pool, they were worn out. When they come home from the ball fields, they're worn out. So there's a lot of benefits in things that we're doing. The, some of the special programs that we have, I've got a picture up here of the polar bear plunge. Mr. Young, Vice Mayor Young and Mayor McFarland was there last Saturday, jumping into the icy waters, 44 degrees at, at Borough Beach. And we had 273 people come and jump in that day. And we do that as a cause-related, an event. And we ask people to bring food to that event. We had 455 pounds of food donated that day that we gave to Greenhouse Ministries. And it's a good time of year because at that time of year, the shelves are empty from the holidays. So we're replenishing the shelves, but we're also having a good time. I look at the lady sitting on the float at Flick and Float, which was one of award-winning programs that we had at the last state conference that Ms. Becky Johnson over here actually was overseeing that program. And I think about that lady that probably had a very stressful day at work, but she's not thinking about anything. She's got her toes in the water, watching the movie, and having a great time. And that's what Parks and Recreation is all about. It's about releasing that stress. It's about providing that avenue for people to be able to come out and enjoy the spaces and recreate and think about their health and wellness. We partner with 145 different groups throughout the city. The Half Marathon is one of those that we partner with. 3,250 people participated in the Half Marathon this last year and we sold out in record time again. So Murphy's Fun Run is down the next slide that you see. And the emphasis here is that we want to start people at an early age and we want to instill those values of good health and healthy, healthy living, healthy lifestyles, so that it carries through their entire life as they progress on. In our athletics, again, under the health and wellness, we start, the little picture up in the upper right-hand corner is our Smart Start Program. We start from 2 to 4. And we do it in all the different sports. And we have special-sized balls and we have special equipment. And we engage the parents. And we find that the parents have more fun sometimes than the kids because they're learning the rules, they're doing things, and the kids are having a great time. But it gets them started at that age and gets them thinking about athletics and gets them engaged into a healthy activity. We have about 16,000 athletes per year that participate in our programs. And we're really proud of that fact. In our youth basketball, we just signed up, actually, we start Saturday. I'm sure Mr. Mayor McFarland's ready to go coach. But we have 1,141 kids signed up with 142 teams. We practice at 10 different sites and only three of those are Parks and Recreation sites. We utilize the schools for the other seven sites. But it just takes you on. You start thinking about all the things that happens in Parks and Recreation. Tournaments, bringing people in from outside. Last year, we had 68 tournaments. It's kinda hard to fathom that we had 68 tournaments. But we had almost 50,000 athletes and coaches that came in and they probably brought another 100,000 people with them that stayed in our hotels, that ate in our restaurants, that bought our gas. And we estimate the economic impact of those 68 tournaments at around $27 million. And so, again, we're, we're promoting the health and wellness of our community and as people come in, we're promoting it for our visitors as well. Under the social equity, it's really important to think about the balance of Parks and Recreation throughout your community. I know I mentioned we had 16,000 athletes, but we have a town of 120,000. So that leaves about 104,000 people that we're trying to provide a balance for and provide other recreation services for. And not everybody really, I guess, aspires to be an athlete. They look for other things. So we look for innovative ways to engage people in all ages. The, the two slides that I've got up here is, is a program we call Wisdom of the Elders. And it's where we, we team the seniors with the youth in the community and through art, they communicate their heritage. And this is a program that we partner with Vanderbilt University on. And it's really a very powerful program. And I know Councilwoman Madeline Skels Harris has participated in that program and, and is a supporter of that. But it, it's very impressive to see the art and see the work that these people have produced. And to see the, if you go and watch the youth that is in this program and just see they're captured by the stories that the elders are telling them, it's really impressive. Of course, we wouldn't be remiss if we didn't mention our children's theater, which is basically in its 25th year. And we just produced the show Annie. We had a sellout. It's really our first sellout show. We sold 921 tickets for that particular show. And we have a lot of children and we have a lot of successes. You think of Mr. Chris Young, country music singer, came through our program. And we've got a lot of other success stories for our cultural arts programs. And we do cultural arts camps. And we do cultural arts camps throughout the summer, we do arts in the park, we do a lot of things that promote the arts throughout the community. In our youth development, which is another program that we have developed, we encourage in, the education of children and the opportunities that they have. In our, in our youth engagement program in 2014, and I want to tell you, the way we count participation is, if you come to our program five times in a week, then you count, they're counted as five. And we count user visits. Well, the user visits in our youth, Youth Development Program in 2014 exceeded 10,000 user visits. And that is pretty astonishing if you think about the three areas, Patterson, Oakland, and McFadden, where we offer this program. And we, we focus on leadership and character development, and we do a lot of mentoring with the children. We do things that talk to them about accountability and character and coaching and tutoring. And we even check homework for those particular children. And in sometimes, in some instances, we'll provide meals through the city's summer feeding program. I know in last year, we provided over 2,500 meals. And in some cases, that's the best meal that the child gets all day. So we think that's an important program. And we've got a rewards-based program for the kids that do good. They get to go on field trips, and we do overnight camps at Barfield and other things. So there's, there's, and I'm just mentioning a few of the programs that we do. Because our staff, staff-led programs, we have over 289 staff-led programs. And in user visits in those particular programs exceed 380,000 user visits. And like I mentioned, we cooperate with 145 different user groups. And during the peak season, you usually see in our bigger parks, anywhere from 3,000 to 5,000 people, which means that about 15,000 people are coming to the parks on a regular basis. And then annually, we're estimating that about 900,000 people visit our parks. And so from everything, from spring clean to Uncle Dave Bacon Days, we seem to be involved with, but we're proud to do that. We continue to build our partnerships. And we feel that using these three guiding principles that NRPA has set forth, that we meet all of the goals that the council has established for us to provide Parks and Recreation Services for our citizens. Onto current projects. There's a lot of precision, I like that picture. I think that really kind of tells the quality of what we're trying to get in our projects. And we've got a lot of renovation projects that's going on, we've got some new projects that are going on. And those projects are going to provide us more opportunity to provide recreation services to our citizens. Our first project I want to talk about is our indoor tennis courts. And this is a rendering of what it's going to look like when it's completed. And you can see that it's starting to take shape. And one of the things that I want to point out and just talk to you just briefly is this project is probably about a month behind. And it's due to the weather. You can see in the lower right-hand slide that the, that the foundation there, the base stone where the courts are going to go is wet. What we've been faced with is the fact that as soon as we get that dried out and they remediate and the contractor and the paving contractor has been really working to remediate that, soon as they get it remediated, it rains again. And then they'll remediate and it'll rain again. Yesterday and today, they were out chipping the ice off of there, removing the moisture by removing the ice off of the stone. And I know that Monday, we, I had Mr. Chris Griffith, our city engineer, out, and we all witnessed a proof roll of that subgrade. And it was pretty good. The only holdup is the moisture. And so we're doing another proof roll tomorrow afternoon at 2:00. And if that looks good, then they're going to try to plan to pave probably next week. But guess what? Monday, it's projected to rain 50%. So we're fighting the elements. But the contractor is continuing to build the building, and we still think that we'll have an opening date sometime in April. Here's the, here's the thing that I want you to remember about this. As soon as we can get it paved, and the paving, I think, is the most important part because the paving is, is the tennis court surface itself. The building, to me, is secondary to, to the quality of the court that is paved. But as soon as those courts are paved, we're about 45 days from having the courts finished. There's about a 30-day curing time for the asphalt, and then about a 15-day period for putting the surfacing down. So just know that once we get it down, we get the paving down, we're about 45 days from completing the courts. And they're continuing to work on the building. The next project that we're working on is our Greenway. We've got three different projects for Greenways. The first is the Phase 4, and if you remember, we broke that into Phase 4A and 4B. We had bid Phase 4A, we've got those bids back, we've opened them, we've evaluated them, and we've sent them to the state, and we're waiting for a reply. As soon as we get that reply back, we'll be bringing that to the council for consideration. The second is the reconstruction of the old Greenway. And we've got, we're finalizing the plans for that. We're going to be replacing the bathrooms at the trailhead of Thompson Lane and Manson Pike. And we'll be replacing the lighting at Thompson Lane Trailhead and General Bragg Trailhead, and then reworking the bridge approaches. Over the years, what happens is where the trail meets the bridges, that has sunk some. So we're redoing that and correcting that safety issue that we have. Also, the Corps of Engineers have re-engaged with us on the North Murfreesboro Greenway. And they're looking to hopefully get that project under construction in August, late August, early September of this year. That will start at Walter Hill and run three miles to the east along the Stones River. The next one is the West Park. I know we've talked about that one pretty extensively, but I wanted to go ahead and throw this graphic up here and just show you how our parks line up from north to south, our four major parks, and where our coverage is lacking. And it's right there in that western portion of the city. The western portion of the city, there's about 40,000 residents that live in the western portion of the city. And just something that kind of relates to that, if you think about the size of the town of Smyrna, it's about 39,700 and so folks. So that portion of our city is larger than the town of Smyrna. And I don't know if that resonates with you, but it sure resonates with me when we're thinking about that. But the other thing that we have to think about, and one of the things that we've done here, is we move forward, we've had an RFP that we put out, we solicited to landowners that had acreage that was 50 acres or above, we encouraged landowners to, that were joint to each other, they could submit together. We had 19 proposals turned in, you can see in yellow where they are highlighted. We evaluated those with a team from Kimmelhorn and from the staff. We've identified the four top potential sites for that. And we just, in the next couple of months, we'd like to move forward with that project. One thing that I want to point out, and I've mentioned the National Recreation and Parks Association, they have standards that is across the board, kind of the middle-of-the-road standards for what they would recommend for facilities within a community. If you look at the baseball softball standard, they say for baseball, one field for every 5,000, for softball, one field for every 5,000. If you combine them, it's one field for every 2,500. Using that standard, our community is about 27 fields short from that standard. We haven't built a baseball and softball field since we built Barfield. Barfield was built 15 years ago. And the town was around 68,000 when we built it. The other thing I want to mention is about 30% of our participation comes from outside the city, in the urban growth boundary. So if you really think about that, our service population for Parks and Recreation is not 120,000, it's around 160,000. So we get those folks as well into our facilities. But I just wanted to put that graphic up there and talk about that. And that was a lot of the reasons why we're now recommending that we develop a park and purchase additional acreage for our parks because we need that. That 540 acres of active park land that I've talked about earlier is maxed out. We cannot develop that anymore, there's no room for other facilities. Sportscom, we're renovating that, there's a lot of folks that go to Sportscom that is, is really excited about that. You see the rendering of what it looks like with the addition on the front, and you can see the pictures of how they're progressing. That project is on schedule. We are scheduled to complete that project around the 1st of May. And we're going to be closing Sportscom down in March and April and giving it to the contractor so he can complete his job. We're going to be putting in new HVAC, new roof, reworking the restrooms, the shower facilities, adding an elevator, new gym lights, and refinishing the gym floor along with the addition. Some other projects that, that council has directed the Parks and Recreation Department to undertake is to look at a soccer practice facility. We've done that, there was two sites that we evaluated, the Coleman Farm and the Jordan Farm. The consultant just today sent me this rendering, and this is at the Jordan Farm. And you can see where there's six full-size soccer fields there. To the north is Cherry Lane, to the, I guess, to the west or east, to my left, I guess you would say, is Leanna Road. But also, it shows the new Cherry Lane that is, that's projected to come through that particular area. So that's where we're at with that project. I know that Mr. Cromley and I need to get with the consultant and talk about some of the pricing for this particular project, but we do have a conceptual drawing at this particular stage. Also, one of the other things that council has approved is for us to engage the city schools into looking into city school parks. And we've done that, we've talked to Dr. Gibbert and Mr. Anderson, and the consultant has, is formulating a plan and looking at the resources at the schools. And we've picked out five schools, Irma Segal Elementary, Mitchell Nielsen Elementary, the Discovery School at Bellwood, Black Fox Elementary, and Case and Lane Elementary. And you can see how that coverage on a one-mile and a three-mile radius covers pretty much the city. And we tried to target the ones that hit the biggest population areas within the city and also for the schools, which ones would benefit the schools the most in the development of a school park area. Recently, we finished the McFadden renovation. If you have not been to McFadden, you need to go. That building was built in 1968, and it looks brand-new. We're getting a lot of requests for the building, the participation is going up. And so we're very, very proud of all the things that was done at McFadden. And lastly, the Gladys Blanton Park, which the council has named after Ms. Blanton, is now complete and open to the public. We've been communicating with the Blanton family, and Ms. Blanton does like to get out in the cold. And so we're planning a grand opening sometime later in the spring. We'll invite you all out for ribbon cutting and so forth. But that park looks really, really good. You notice the little arch is the old swing set. So we repurposed the old swing set and made an arch entrance and hung the Gladys Blanton sign on it. And it's, it's a real benefit. I want to mention that for the council and for the public that's watching, that if you want information on our programs, you can go to our website, murphysboroughtn.gov, and you can hit backslash parks, it takes you straight to the park section. And if you have questions about any of the projects, we've got a projects page on there, it's MPRD Projects. You can also find the rec connection, and we have seven Facebook pages as well that you can find information posted for Parks and Recreation. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have regarding our department programs or projects.
Lanny, I was just going to mention, I was actually pulling up that website while you were talking so I could, so I could say that to you. But I want to say, it's, you know, it's really nice. So I appreciate you guys putting this together and having it right available for folks to go look at. And if you, you know, for anybody that's out there, you can just go right to it and see exactly where we are on any of these projects. So people who are really interested in tennis can go right here and see the latest and greatest pictures and know where we are on the project. The soccer, here it is, you know, McFadden, there it is, Gladys Blanton. So it's really nice, I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you. And we update that weekly. And if we've got fresh pictures, we refresh it with the, with the new pictures and so forth as well.
All right.
Okay.
Very busy in your department.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 14 has been removed from the agenda, and we'll move to beer permits.
I have a whole stack for you tonight. We have a special event beer permit from the Tennessee Association of Fiscal Plant Administrators, which is a 501(c)(3) organization, and their event will be held at MTSU on May the 12th. They also had permission from MTSU to apply for this permit since it was on their property. We have a special event permit application from the Chamber of Commerce. There are several event locations listed here, this is for their business after-hours networking events. And they're going to be busy this fiscal year, or calendar year, I guess. We have, Walgreens is undergoing an ownership change within how their, their corporate structure's done. So they are being required to get new beer applica, new beer permits for their locations. They have one location that's finished all the requirements to get a new beer permit, and that's the location at 2708 New Salem Highway. And we do recommend that one for approval tonight. The following locations, 310 South Church Street, 106 West Northfield Boulevard, 3389 Memorial Boulevard, 2006 Medical Center Parkway, 2401 O'Fort Parkway, and 1131 Mercury Boulevard, lack, finishing their building codes inspection. Lack, finishing their building codes inspections. So when those are done, we would like to reissue that permit. Everything else meets our requirements. And we also have Quicksack at 1630 Bradford Pike that is getting an ownership change. We're content with the background check on that one, but we do still like their building codes inspections. And then we also have a convenience store name change, Memorial Mart at 728 Memorial Boulevard. We do lack the codes inspections, but we do have the background inspection, and we'd like to issue that permit once that inspection is complete. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Okay, you have these applications in front of you.
We make the motion to approve these pending, or contingent on the fulfilling the requirements.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into payment of statements.
Counsel, I say, if we have the money, let's pay the bills.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second, to pay the bills.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Now you have the list, our 2015 list with a new council member. So we've tried to, spoke with you individually on the commissions, or the different boards
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
and commissions, on the ones you wanted to stay on and how we reshuffled.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Now you have the list, our 2015 list with a new council member. And what we have, the changes, Mr. LaLance is on golf, risk management, and tennis. So we've tried to, spoke with you individually on the commissions, or the different boards And Mr. Shacklet will be on airport and cable TV. and commissions, on the ones you wanted to stay on and how we reshuffled. Mr. Smotherman will be on Parks and Rec, planning, and urban environmental. And what we have, the changes, Mr. LaLance is on golf, risk management, and tennis. And I believe that's the only ones that have changed, if I'm right, Ms. Machado. Does that sound right? Okay. And what we'll try to do as the year goes on, if, I know many of you have been on some of the same boards, and if you see one that you want to get off, I think it would be great to get other council members opportunity to get experience on different boards within And Mr. Shacklet will be on airport and cable TV. Mr. Smotherman will be on Parks and Rec, planning, and urban environmental. the city. And so just let Mr. Lyons know, or myself know, and we'll, along the year, probably And I believe that's the only ones that have changed, if I'm right, Ms. Machado. give it, you know, six months or a year, and we'll ask again. Does that sound right? Okay. And what we'll try to do as the year goes on, if, I know many of you have been on some So that way, we can all get experience on different boards. Do we need a motion for this, Ms. McGannan? of the same boards, and if you see one that you want to get off, I think it would be great
With changes, yes.
Okay.
Mayor, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. to get other council members opportunity to get experience on different boards within
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
the city.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
And so just let Mr. Lyons know, or myself know, and we'll, along the year, we'll probably
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
give it, you know, six months or a year, and we'll ask again. So that way, we can all get experience on different boards. Do we need a motion for this, Ms. McGannan?
With changes, yes.
Okay.
Mayor, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Any other business from the staff or the city council?
Mayor, I have, we had discussed earlier about how our 6:30 open-mic progress was working. And there were some proposals to leave it like it is, and there were some proposals to change it to 7 o'clock and have it televised. I have a problem with the 7 o'clock televised in the fact that if we have one speaker and then we have a crowd of people waiting for the meeting to start at 7:00, and we advertise the meeting at 7:00 for the comments and 7:30 for the regular meeting, we're going to have people sitting in the audience for 25 minutes while we either adjourn or discuss things that aren't necessarily on the agenda. So I think it'd be best to leave it at 6:30, like we're doing it now. I see no reason to change it.
And Mr. Young, I appreciate your comments on that. I would make the suggestion that immediately following the public comments meeting, that the council meeting would begin, and therefore, we wouldn't have any 25-minute period or 20-minute period. But I do think it's important that we listen to the public, and I think it's important that we go ahead and start televising. I know we've been doing this for at least, what, six months now at least? And we've found it very beneficial to have the public comments. I think it's been constructive. I think it's been educational, and I think it's allowed us to hear from the people who vote for us, elect us, to represent them. And it's an opportunity for them to present a presentation to the entire council. I think that's the true benefit of it. I mean, certainly, they could pick up the phone and call any of us on a daily basis and probably talk with us, or send us an email and get a response back. But I just, it's a different environment when you have that, the entire council there to listen to you and get a feel for the response of the entire group. And I know that we've been beneficial to small businesses who have struggled because of construction projects that we probably weren't aware of, and been successful at hopefully making the transition through the construction phase of Broad Memorial easier by allowing signage. I know we've listened to comments on several different topics, ranging from codes to traffic flow and other issues that are all important issues that the public's simply missing out on by not having it televised. And so I would say just include it on the agenda as part of the regular meeting and not have it as a standalone special meeting. And simply, if, we'll continue to allow the three-minute segments, and if we have one person speak, then three minutes into the meeting, we'll be into our regular agenda like we normally would. If we have 10 people show up, then we might go the full 30 minutes. But I do think there is a maximum number that we need to, in fairness to the people who do show up for the regular meeting, I think 30 minutes is not too long to wait to have your business conducted and listen to it. But the, I do think it's important enough that we should allow their voices to be heard by as many people as possible.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Two things. Ms. McGannan, legally, we have to post the times of both meetings, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I was just wondering, since we are posting now 6:30 the public and 7:30 the regular council meeting, if in some way, maybe we can compromise here, maybe, I'm just throwing this out, that we start the public at 6:45? Because lately, I think the last couple of months, we've had that lag time, what, 15 minutes at least, before we could start the regular meeting? So if we start the public at 6:45, based on how the public has been coming, I think that's plenty of time, and then we start a regular meeting at 7:00?
Would there be any problem, Ms. McGannan, with advertising the meetings starting at the same time? Because I think what I'm trying to do is differentiate the two meetings into one meeting and just add it as an agenda item that we have public comments.
You could certainly add a public comment section and just advertise it as one meeting that would start at 7:00, which I think is what you were suggesting. You could also do as Ms. Gels Harris suggests and keep it the two meetings, advertise it at 6:45 if it turns out that more people start coming and that we, you know, need the full half hour. The next month, you could advertise it at 6:30. So you're not as bound time-wise in terms of the advertisement as you are with the regular council meeting. Because we have to advertise public hearings, it's hard to change the time of the regular council meeting because you advertised it often in advance. But it's easy, so to speak, to change the time of the special meeting where you're hearing from the public. So that could vary based on experience if the council wanted to do that, as opposed to what you were suggesting in terms of just adding it as a regular item on the agenda. That would be, you know, very, that wouldn't require additional advertising. You'd just put it on the agenda.
I just think it's not broken. You know, we've had some great comments. We heard from Mr. Baines this, tonight. He had some very good comments that we took notes on and will take actions on. And he spoke about three to five minutes. But then, for the next 25 minutes, we basically sat here. So I don't particularly want the citizens of Murphysboro to have to sit there from 7:00 to 7:30.
You wouldn't, if you did it the way Mr. Shacklet's suggesting, Mr. Young. If only, if only Mr. Baines showed up and spoke for three minutes, then at 7:03, you would go to what the next item on the agenda was.
Can you advertise it like that?
You wouldn't have to advertise it as two meetings. You would just advertise regular council meetings. You wouldn't have to separately advertise it as a special meeting.
So if only one person showed up, what I'm saying is, if they spoke for three minutes, then the regular meeting would, well, and it would be part of the regular meeting, but it would just delay the meeting three minutes.
Well, I think, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at the value of all the council members, as well as the mayor and staff and the public's time, because, I mean, there is a dead period between the two meetings. Most people that attend one of them attend the other. And in order to eliminate that, if we would just simply combine the two meetings into one, and if it lasts for three minutes, then we immediately, at the conclusion of the initial, and I hate to differentiate them in meetings because I don't want us to do that, I just wish we could add the public comments segment to the start of the city council meeting, up to 30 minutes, not to exceed 30 minutes, because we do have business that we need to get on with, and it's important business as well. But the actual meeting wouldn't be delayed more than three minutes or six minutes if there were one or two people who showed up, and then we could, the county does it that way, and seems to work very successfully.
Mr.?
Did we, six months ago, do a six-month motion so that this would be, or is this a?
We can change it any time.
Yeah, I don't think we're bound. I think we, I think the council said they would, you know, the rules that you adopted for process, you said you would review if change were needed there. But I don't remember a time limit on the special meeting concept. But it was, let's try it, was said, but I don't believe there was a time limit on how long the trial would be.
Does anybody know, do we have any kind of record, and this is maybe not realistic to ask, but does anybody have a record of the number of different people who have come and spoken at our?
The first month, we had eight to 10. Then we went, we've been, on average, five to six. And in the last couple of months, we've gone down, you know, to three.
Well, I'm talking about the number of different people, too. Not just, not just the number of people who have gotten up and spoken at each meeting, but the number of different people, because there's been a lot of, a lot of repetitive, you know, same people speaking. And so I'm curious as to whether or not that's 10 people, or 15 people, or it seems more like 15 or 20. You know, personally, I'm, I feel like it's not been, do we have that answer?
I wasn't here for the October meeting, but I've got my notes from all the sessions. It looks like it's about a dozen, plus or minus.
Yeah, so, yeah, to me, first of all, I think it's working how it is, in my opinion. We're giving folks a chance to speak to us, and we're getting progress made from that. So personally, I feel like it's good the way it is. If we, if we did anything as it relates to what I think we could do to make this thing more time-effective, would be, we just move the time to 6:45, leave it like it is, start a special meeting at 6:45, start our meeting at 7:00. Suit me just fine. We can, we can always change this if we get another six months down the road, decide to do something else. So I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Let me make a comment one more time. When you turn those cameras on, you're going to get a different kind of crowd come up here. And you have certain folks in the public that have a platform, whether it be for districts, whether it be for this, whether it be for that, they'll be here, and they may come multiple times, and you may hear the same thing all the time. That is not what that special meeting is for. It's for people to have a legitimate concern, to come in and address us face-to-face, even though now they can call us on the phone, email us, this and the other. And if they don't take the time to come down here and talk to us, that tells me something about those particular people. Now to open this thing up, the cameras, and end up being like a circus, that is not what I am for. I can tell you right now. I've watched those kind of meetings, and I've seen how they happen, and I've seen how people use those as a personal platform for their own personal agendas. And I will go along with whatever this council wants to do, but I do not want to open that door, period.
Mr. LaLance, your motion.
Real quick, we have a motion on the floor.
So that would be to start the special meetings at 6:45 and start our regular meetings at 7:00. We still do it on the first Thursday, so we keep everything the same, except we just move the 6:30 to 6:45.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second, so do we have discussion on that?
Just like it is.
Let me make a couple of comments, because initially, last time I was on council, we introduced this as well. And if you remember, we lost, we didn't have as many people show up, and we were coming early as well. And we thought it wasn't accomplished, we thought it wasn't accomplishing a great deal, so we dropped, you know, stopped doing it. I think that one of the, one of the things that I think an open mic does, is, does allow us to have access to the public's opinion. And I'm not so afraid of the fact that it would turn into a circus as much. And I think one of the reasons we have, at least the times that I've been here, you know, familiar voices being heard, those people are educated about presenting before us, so they do it in a deliberate fashion. They learn how to communicate, what is an effective way to communicate with their council. A circus is not necessarily the best way to communicate truth and wisdom to the council. So the only way that changes, though, is for people to be educated and to learn how to communicate to the council. And sometimes, democracy is not necessarily pretty at first, but I think if we want, we see the value of the input of the public to our deliberating of an issue. My perspective is, maybe we have to go through that groin pain a little bit, if there's a problem. We're saying there's a problem, but we don't know that there's going to be a problem of when we open up the mic, when we turn on the cameras. We see that, we have seen that in the past, but eventually, people understand, well, maybe I'm not able to make my point if I don't do it in a deliberate fashion and do it, communicate in a reasonable fashion. So I'd almost be for just the opposite, and to have the mic open, to allow public to have access, the cameras on, as a part of our regular agenda, and see if this doesn't encourage the public to communicate in a different fashion, in a more reasonable fashion. So I'm coming down probably differently than you are on. I think, I think it probably is a way that the public can learn to access the deliberative process in a little bit more reasonable fashion. So I'm not sure, Rick, I can support your motion.
I respect that, I respect that.
Since we have a motion on the floor and a second, and I'm all about compromising, I would like to see the council do this. Since we have a motion on the floor, 6:45, leave it like it is, and we have a second to that motion, let's do it that way in three months, let's do it 6:45 with the cameras, and let's see which one we like the best.
That makes sense.
Let's just compromise, guys.
It's a demand thing. You know, if I were to see a different kind of perspective and the demand like the 6:45, that doesn't get it, you know? We just come back, tweak it, do something a little different. And I respect Bill, I love him, love you, brother, you know? I know where he's coming from, worked with you a long time, I knew that was going to come out of him. But that's not real world, brother, so I'll leave it at that. We got a motion and second.
Let's just try both ways. Let's just try both ways, though. Let's do the 6:45, no cameras, since we have a motion and a second. Then, three months from now, let's try it, and let's see which method is the best.
Don't have a problem with that.
And Madeline, I'll respond to that by saying, it's not the 15 minutes that I'm trying to save, because I've got the time. I mean, I'll be here if it, if we have to wait an hour between the meetings. But the, the point that I'm trying to make is, and Bill said it much more eloquently than I'll ever say it, is it's an educational process. And if people don't succeed with their techniques, then they will change their techniques. As far as traditionally, what we've experienced so far with the, the meetings, there was the, the red light camera issue that had a huge turnout, I thought, as far as people coming and speaking to us. On the other hand, there, if there's not a hot topic, maybe it's just Mr. Baines and somebody worried about codes, and somebody parked on a lawn or not trimming their bushes properly. And, and not that one's more than important than the other, they're both important issues because they bother citizens. But, but our willingness to listen and, and if, if, if we don't want to listen to people and, and we're concerned that they're going to go over the top with their enthusiasm, we don't need to serve. Because that's our job, is to listen to the public and try and carry out the will of what our community is asking us to do. That's why we're elected. And whether it's televised or not, I think that the tele, the televising of the, the meeting will open up more public discussion and perhaps generate more people who will come. Because, I mean, there's, at this point, there's still several people who don't even know the meeting's taking place. And, and for the small groups that we've seen repetition of people coming two or three times, I, I don't think any of them have came and gone over the same issue more than once. I mean, they generally have a different topic or a different concern, and we have seen that. They've been very respectful of our time, they've been very respectful of, in the way they've communicated. There has not been any performance, there has not been any, anyone who has gone over the top with their presentation. They've been very polite, they've been very constructive in their direction or criticism or comment. And that, I, I can't say that there's any reason that we shouldn't go ahead and televise it, go ahead and add it to the meeting, and, and certainly, and, although the time is not important, if we reduce it to 15 minutes, then you're only going to allow, you know, I think we said we were averaging about six people. That means that six people couldn't speak in 15 minutes if they all spoke three minutes.
The point I'm trying to make, not, not the time, the point I'm trying to make is the compromise. Whether it's 15 minutes or a half an hour, my thing is, let's try both ways, and let's see which way is the best. Since there's already a motion on the floor, that we keep it like it is, not televised, let's go one month with not televised, let's go a month with televised, and let's just see what works best. My point is, let's try both ways. It's not the time, it's let's try both ways.
Okay, so we've got a motion, I'm losing my voice, I'm sorry. I've got, got a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Yes.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
No.
Mr. Smotherman.
No.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, as we're talking about this, let's, as the council members have brought up, let's, let this be a continuing dialogue that we can, if there's room for improvement, let's definitely improve on that. And as we talk about that, Citizen Academy starts in February, and to date, we've got two applications for 20...
20 to 25 spots.
Spots. So from a council standpoint, if we can, within all of our spheres of influence, Eddie at the Hardee's table, see if you can recruit some of those guys to, to come be part of the Citizens Academy and that we see different groups, let's try to pull some people in to learn a little more about the city. Okay, is there any other business to come before the City Council?
No, no business with the ML Keating Breakfast, is, is, what is it, man, the 17th? 17th, the James Union Building. I encourage any of the public and any, and I don't make very many announcements like this, but, but that's a really special occasion, especially for the African-American community. And I'd like for anybody who wants to support that event, do so.
Okay.
Hey, I'm gonna back up one section here to, to what we just talked about, and something that Eddie had a good point on that I do want to clarify, and this may be something we can do, you, you might help me on this. But, you know, we do have a mechanism for people to sign up to come speak in our public forum. I'd say if, you know, I certainly think if we get, you know, we have a situation now where by the time you get three minutes and a little bit of break to get people, we've got room for about nine folks, how it's been right now, 27 minutes plus a little walking back and forth time. I was, you know, I would certainly be for, if nine people sign up, that we would take, that we would let them have that time to speak. So I, I don't necessarily want to cut it down to less people, you know. We, we want, yeah, I mean, it's been good to get the, the feedback, and that's certainly a, it's been a good thing. How can we make sure we do that, do we keep, I mean, if it goes to 7:15, can we...
The council can advertise a meeting for 7:00 and start late. If the council decided it had nine people signed up, and it wanted to run the start of the council meeting, the regular council meeting late, it could do that.
Do I need to amend that motion in any way?
No.
Okay, very good, yeah. Everybody...
You know, I, I don't think you want to set a policy that you would do that. I think you, you know, the chair would have the flexibility not to adjourn the special meeting.
All right.
Okay. Happy New Year to everyone. First meeting in 2015, we'll call it adjourned.